All right, welcome everyone. Like to call the regular meeting of the Ansonia Board of Aldermen for June 8th to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Trish, can we get roll call?
Okay, other men and women. King.
Here.
Stowe. Phipps.
Here.
Tar.
Yeah.
Cassetti.
Here.
Gennetti.
Here.
Bigorolo. Roman.
Here.
Yau Man.
Here.
Rivers.
Here.
Mamon.
Here.
Duert.
Here.
De Libro.
Here.
Blackwell. Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Eleven present, three absent.
Great. I declare quorum. All right, before we get going, I have one correction or in addition to the executive session on the agenda. Item number one lists Silver Hill Road. And it doesn't have the address, and there's actually two addresses on Silver Hill that will be the 22 Silver Hill Road and
That would be me.
And 48 Silver Hill Road. So that'll be in the executive session. I just want to get a motion to clarify that for the agenda before we start. Motion by Cassetti, second by Phipps?
Yep.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most? Okay, thank you. All right, consideration of previous minutes. We have the minutes. You receive them in your email for the May 11th regular meeting.
I make a motion that the minutes be accepted with any corrections if need be.
Motion by Strowman, second by Cassetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stained? Great, motion passes. You name us. Thank you. All right, public session. And just a quick reminder before we get going. Please identify yourself, name and address for the public record. Also a reminder, we don't do Q and A. But you're free to make any kind of statement. And please try to limit your statements or questions to three minutes or less. Do we have anyone from the public tonight who wishes to speak?
Yes, I'd like to. Yes, no? Hello? My name is Capinos.
Oh, hang on. So you go first. And in the queue, I saw Chris also raise his hand, correct? Okay, so we'll start with Stan. Go ahead. Name and best for the public record, please.
Right, my name is Stan Capinos. I live at 8 Kruger Court in Ansonia. Last month, I sent an email to my alderman as well as the president of the Alderman Board requesting a consideration for the forming of a citizens panel to review the current situation at 126 Ford. And the mayor was nice enough to reach out to me. We had a brief conversation with the mayor and the, excuse me, head of the economic council. And basically what we did is we just talked about some of the issues, but my request to the Board of Aldermen was for the development of a citizens panel. And I don't know if the Board of Aldermen had any discussion about that.
Okay, I'm going to defer to Alderman Mamon on this one only because I wasn't at the very beginning of the meeting. I did receive your message, Stan.
Okay.
And I missed the public session portion of that, so I'm not sure what the discussion was, or if there was.
Yeah, it wasn't any discussion. It was just I read the letter and they went on from there.
Okay.
Yeah, there was no further discussion. Stan, you know, mentioned his issue and there was no further discussion on it.
Okay. Mayor, do you have any comments?
Well, I'd like to see if we could meet with the Subcommittee of the Board of Aldermen in regards to this and answer his concerns.
Okay.
And Sheila, did you have a comment?
Um, no, I guess I know you don't want to back and forth. I was, I would just, you know, suggest that or just, um, but.
Your phone is coming in your house.
I couldn't hear that.
Can't hear you, Sheila. I just, I just wanted to remind everyone that this is a private property. It's privately held. That's all. And no further comment.
Okay, yes, I do understand that just as my property is privately held and as a neighbor, I have a concern for what's happening with that property. And I think there are others in my neighborhood who are concerned. We'd like to get together and look at options for the future.
Okay, Stan, I will, like I said, I wasn't at the beginning of the meeting last time, but I'll confer with the city since you already spoke with them. And I'll speak with the mayor again and get back to you.
Yeah, I do appreciate that.
Thank you, Stan. Thank you for coming.
And I know these things take time, so we'll just keep at it until we get to some resolution. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you for attending. Next up was Chris. Yep, go ahead. Name and address for the public record.
Christopher Makarski. I live at 22 Silver Hill Road. And the issue that I'm having is I, the road is very thin over there and it's dangerous. There's also a curve there. And I have no, there's never been anything afforded to go and allow like even just for temporary parking to offload groceries. So I started digging out some of the town property over there so I can make a stack block wall to hold up about four feet of dirt. And just have a place where I can offload groceries. With the curve being up there just above that spot, it wouldn't be too smart to park there all night, which is not the intention of it. It goes in front of a neighbor's yard and that seems to be where the problem is. So I've got a couple of sketches here like this right here is where my stairs are. So I have to go upstairs just so I can get to the land so I can go up more stairs to get to my house. About 50, 60 feet away is my garage down the hill. So that's why it's so important for me to unload stuff right by the stairs. Now, my property line, my property stops here. At about seven feet over. I want to go a total of about 24 feet, which leaves me to go 17 feet on the town property in front of the neighbor's property here. Now, this is like the very tip of their property. Their property also does not go, you know, cut straight up. I'm not trying to put this in any way in front of their house. Their property actually goes off on an angle. This is actually a little bit steeper of an angle. This is the top view. And this is the front view. So if you look at it from the top and you're looking down at it, I'm just trying to get a little sliver in front of where they have this corner. Because it's dangerous. And I'm over there even two feet out, anybody that comes around the corner, they stop. Whether or not there's oncoming traffic. If there's oncoming traffic, I mean, you know, in both directions, it's like everybody has, oh my God, we're all going to die moment. So during the many complaints, you know, I thought, well, let's see what the neighborhood feels about it. So I spent May 1st and 2nd, the first nice weekend we had this year, going around to the neighborhood. And I got over 100 signatures of people who think it's a good idea that I go and I continue building this because it will make it safe. What it specifically says is we, the undersigned, want and need Mr. Makarski to complete the work he has started on the town property for a parking space so he can safely offload groceries and items from his vehicles. The project of his will make it safer to travel that part of the road, bringing at least some peace of mind and a better quality of life for the area in general, as well as a visual upgrade. Thank you. So, you know, it's not just going to benefit me, even though I will benefit not having to go, you know, and get terrified every time someone comes around a corner. Also won't have to lug their groceries all the way up the hill and it'll make it safer for everybody. And that's the whole purpose of doing this. And obviously I've needed to come here and tell everybody that.
Thank you for coming tonight. And like you heard at the beginning, this is on the end of the agenda. So we will be discussing this as well as some other items in executive session. So appreciate you coming tonight and providing some details for us.
Okay, and I'll guess I just get to listen to the rest.
All right, thanks. Would anyone else from the public wish to address the Board of Aldermen tonight? Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address the board? Third and final call. Anyone that wishes to address the board? Hearing none, we'll end the public session and move on to the public official session started with Mayor Cassetti.
President Schuer.
How you doing?
Other men and women and residents of the great city of Ansonia. This is certainly an excitement in the air this month. It certainly has something to do with the beginning of summer. I've been giving graduation speeches at all our schools this week, and let me tell you, these kids can't wait to start their vacation. Thanks to Joe Tobacco and his team and all their work during the unusual and challenging year. And of course, congratulations to the class of 2021. I can also say the excitement has a lot to do with our emergence from COVID health crisis. Infection numbers are down and vaccination statistics are looking better and better. A huge thanks to arms and our first responders and to Pat Charmel and Griffin Hospital that proved an invaluable community partner by helping stage so many vaccination clinics at the Ansonia Armory. Thank you also to Jeff Kapola, or as we now refer to him as Vaccine Jeff. And Public Works for helping to organize and staff. Now we can finally see that light at the end of the tunnel. In the words of Barry Manilow, looks like we made it. I'm sorry, it must be the heat that's affected my musical selection, but whatever. But for me, the real excitement is realizing just how much progress is on the verge of occurring in our city. From the opening of the new downtown police station to the opportunity of redevelopment of Olson Drive to improvement projects at the Riverwalk, State Street, East Main Street and more. There is so much positive progress. Let's also be prepared for demolition and SHW in the copper and brass facility. Shaw Development's ongoing redevelopment of the ATP and Palmer buildings. And our upcoming talk with Derby next week about the possibility of regionalizing our Ansonia Derby Senior Center. And with all that progress comes the reopening of full city services from City Hall to the library and nature center. Look for a schedule out next week that will bring us to full in-person capacity citywide. Now that's exciting. I want to take a moment to acknowledge some changes. I am proud to announce tonight that I have hired Mike Warhola, the EMT supervisor, to serve as interim superintendent of our arms department. Mike has worked at arms for eight years and is more than ready for his leadership position. I wish him the best of luck in his new role. Also, I want to take a moment to thank WPCA Superintendent Brian Capozzi for his fine work for the city of Ansonia. And to regretfully inform you of his decision to retire from the position. Brian has served the WPCA well during his time in the position. We wish him the best of luck with his future endeavors. I can report that the WPCA has voted to elevate John Thomasella as acting superintendent and Jason St. Jake's as acting assistant superintendent. Positions to carry on in Brian's absence. I wish them both the best. Finally, I want to recognize two other outgoing employees. Marisol Sullivan Lugo, who served for years at the Ansonia Library and Wendy Sable, who served as the Assistant Director of the Nature Center. Both provided a tremendous service to our residents and truly made Ansonia proud. Congratulations to both of yous on your retirement. Now, I want to wish everyone a great start to summer 2021 and a very happy 4th of July. God bless you all and have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would echo your thoughts and thanking all the employees that are leaving and retiring. Next up, Corporation Council, John Marini.
Mr. President, members of the board, some notes for tonight. The city is working closely with the Ansonia Housing Authority to prepare for a closing on Olson Drive. The city has received all the approvals it needs from the federal government and from the state to make that a reality. And now it's a matter of lining up the right time, the right day and dates for a closing to occur. And next steps will of course be a negotiation with the winning bidder. And we likely will have more details to discuss at our next Board of Aldermen meeting. A big reminder that this Wednesday, Wednesday, the 16th, rather, next Wednesday, there's going to be a discussion at the Armory, 5:30 on the possibility of a regional senior center between Derby and Ansonia. And we've informally discussed with staff some possibilities, but we want to put it out there for the officials and the residents, and of course, the seniors to see what that center would look like, what the logistics would be of a joint operation. And so really, all the members of this board certainly are encouraged to be there 5:30 in person at the Ansonia Armory to discuss more. Project Architect will be on hand to walk through the design and to answer any questions. We are set to make hires at the library and the nature center. Mayor gave thanks to our departing staff members who've brought so much to the city. We are looking to continue on and to fill those roles with the ultimate objective being a robust summer and fall of programming. So we don't want to miss a beat here. And as you know, we've worked very closely with the union, especially with the library to be able to increase capacity while maintaining or even lowering the budget with by use of part timers. And so you're going to hear more new news on that process next month. Again, to quote Barry Manilow, because I hope all of staff is going to be trying to do that tonight. This one's for you guys. We need a date and time to discuss our landlord initiative. We have some drafts for that project. We've talked a bit about it in the past. I would also like to see if, Mr. President, you and the board could assign maybe two to three residents to serve along with the aldermen, just to get some resident input. And the sooner the better, as we are ready to go, we'd like to approach the ordinance committee and the full Board of Aldermen with some possible legislation to pass. And finally, I would ask Mr. President if that could be done tonight. That way we can set things in motion. Finally, I want to thank PBS for coming to the city today. They're doing stories about the allocation of federal dollars for development projects. These dollars coming through Congresswoman Rosa Delora. We thank her and of course PBS for taking the time to give Ansonia some attention. Mayor and staff took a look at Ansonia Copper and Brass and the bridge. That would be the subject of some of those dollars earlier today. And they also were very happy to take a look around Ansonia in general and all of the improvements we're seeing in the downtown area. So with that, we have some executive session items and I would entertain any questions.
Any questions for Attorney Marini tonight from the Aldermen? Are you in?
Yeah, John, can you tell me that date and time you said again?
The 16th, which is next Wednesday.
Wednesday, right, okay. All right, I'm pretty sure I had it right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Corporation Council tonight?
I have another question, Josh. And I don't know, John, if this is best directed to you or to Sheila, or I don't see, I didn't see Kurt's name. But I was just curious as to with the legislative session coming to a close. Does the city seen any sort of numbers as to what we expect out of this budget? And are we going to have to make any sort of changes to our budget before the end of the month? Based on what we think is coming out of the state's budget?
Well, in terms of finances, we're not looking at anything detrimental. We've gotten no indication that we're going to be short funded on that end. I don't believe in a finances here to weigh in a little bit, but nothing is causing us pause. We consider our current budget.
Okay.
That's a good question. That is a good question, though, Joe. And I was going to talk a little bit about some of the resources coming to us from the federal government.
Yeah, and I realize it may be a little bit premature. I don't think the budget has been finalized up at Hartford yet, but I just, you know, normally there's conversations and stuff that's coming down to City Hall. So I wasn't sure how much you guys had heard or seen or know what the budget's going to look like in terms of dollars coming our way.
Yeah, I mean, there's money coming our way to be used for some specific criteria set out by the federal government. And it's of course passed through the state if you're a non-entitlement community like Ansonia. So we expect and we have outstanding about six applications for various categories in the American Acts Recovery Acts funding. And we're hoping, you know, we're hoping we get that. We actually are getting our own local share. But we have an opportunity to apply for some of the state funding that came through the federal government and also for some of the regional funding that came through the federal government. And we've, we've, we've tried to help out WPCA with some of their infrastructure needs as requests came in from them and John Thomasella, I want to thank him for his help on that and Jason and Brian. So we're expecting some infrastructure money coming in on, you know, in the various pools of federal funding coming through. Just want to reassure everyone that we've got applications and are waiting for funding on top of what our local share will be.
Okay, but in addition, in addition to, you know, whatever federal dollars are flowing through the state and those grant opportunities and like that, we're not expecting when the state budget is passed that there's going to be any shortfalls coming our way, low SIP or otherwise, that we're going to have to account for and do anything before the end of June.
Yeah, it doesn't look that way, Joe. Kurt hasn't indicated that that's the case. In fact, I don't, I really don't think so. I think we're going to be level, if not a little bit better off.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Joe, just to, just to kind of reference what Kurt said last month when we were talking through the budget information, obviously it wasn't finalized at that point. But they were somewhat ultra conservative in the numbers that they were using for the state. So you know, I think he was saying he was a little more aggressive. Rich was a little more conservative and they kind of landed a little bit more on the rich side. So they believe they're going to be covered with what the state's going to allocate out.
Yeah, but there was a lot of uncertainty surrounding the state's budget over the last couple of weeks, Tony. That's the reason I'm asking the question. I just want to, you know, these last minute moves up and approaches and stuff like that up there. You never, you know, as it comes, as that stuff comes around, I just wanted to make sure we're not looking at any glaring deficits that we're going to have to look at.
Yep, okay, fair enough.
Great, I guess we can transition right over to economic development. Sheila, you
Yeah, and I can shorten my presentation, I guess, because I gave some of it just recently. Okay, so thank you, President Schuer, members of the Board of Aldermen. I want to, I just want to say I can't smile without you.
Yeah, true.
And that's my, yeah, that's my Barry Manilow reference, even though I spent most of the day indoors in air conditioning. I still, I'm still quoting Barry Manilow. So, you know, we did, we talked about outstanding grant applications on the grant end of things. Hopefully, you know, a lot of these grants will be coming through and we'll be making some announcements on that. But any, anything that came to our attention, we have put in for funding for. We could, we could always find a project to fit any kind of grant that comes out there. And the last, the last opportunity was wastewater treatment infrastructure projects. And so WPCA needs a SCADA system. And we, with the mayor's help, we've also identified some lines that need to be expanded because of the expanded use in the downtown area with the new residential apartments. So hopefully we'll be getting some of that funding. But I mean, we have economic development projects occurring throughout the city from one end to the other. State Street is about to hopefully get approved by DOT and we'll, and we can, we'd like to start that project sometime in September if possible. Depends on how quickly it moves through the process. East Main Street will be awarded with this board's permission to Colona Construction. I think they're out of Hartford, but I'll bring that to this board's attention. But they just, we just received word that they're, they are good to go on the state's end of things. So East Main Street, the roadway reconstruction will coordinate with Chief Cota and try to make that an easy transition as we turn it into a one-way and increase the parking spaces. Another 120 additional parking spaces on East Main Street. Lot of activity on ATP and Palmer, windows being replaced, electrical, mechanical, all of that is being done. And, and you can, I'm sure you've seen as you pass by all the material being delivered to the site. So that project is ongoing. PD is wrapping up. The tower looks beautiful. The building looks beautiful if you haven't seen it. And Senior Center will be coming along with a war, a bid award shortly. We had to revise the bids, level the bids, and I think we'll be awarding within the next week or so. And, so you're trying to think of what else. Riverwalk is progressing quickly. I don't know if anyone has gone out there to see the progress they're making, but looks, looks very nice. Will be a beautiful strip of the Riverwalk. And I think that's, that's not it, I'm sure, but that's about all I have for now.
Are there any questions from the Aldermen for economic development tonight?
Yeah, I've got some questions, Josh, and it's actually directed at both Mr. Marini and Ms. O'Malley. And it's regarding the mentioned purchase of Olson Drive from the housing people. And I think John said that it's within a week or so of moving forward. And I was just wondering where the $510,000 is in the budget. Well, I think it's $300,000 upfront and then 41 year and 50 another year. I don't recall that ever being a discussion item in the budget. And more importantly, and secondly, is with respect to Olson Drive, if indeed it's a fait accompli and we will be buying it from ourselves, essentially the way I look at it. There's been more than, more than enough people that have come to me, including myself, thinking that rather than a soccer stadium that was alluded to based upon the RFQ of two years ago, maybe leaving a green space similar to what Shelton has. We seem to be following in the footsteps of Shelton. They've been very successful. And we're putting a whole lot of people down on Main Street with really no place to go after they eat at our restaurants. So it may be a reflection on us to have another look at our plan with Olson Drive and maybe make it a, there's a lot of potential for green space over there, obviously, and parks. I mean, it's, there's a lot of potential rather than giving it to a private developer for the sake of a few dollars in taxes. That's all I have to say about that. I thought it was a dead issue until John flipped it at us tonight, so.
So Alderman Phipps, we've definitely had a little bit of delay due to the state taking a little longer than expected, but we're happy it's on course. With respect to financing, obviously, the original arrangement was staggered to make it affordable. So we're going to be working with the finance department and Kurt to see the best way to allocate the funds within the budget. That being said, of course, there's also the potential to talk to the housing authority, given time has elapsed to figure out what the terms need to be to achieve that objective. So of course, we're very cost conscious there. Sheila, I'm sure is going to talk a little more, but in terms of the end use, we do have to start a process with the bidder to negotiate. But I'll say, you know, we really want that extra dollar. You know, those extra dollars mean extra books. They mean extra teachers. You know, those extra dollars mean extra books, they mean extra teachers. It really allows us to move forward, and it's not just the taxes paid by a developer. It's to attract people downtown, to make our restaurants more successful, to make our businesses more successful. You know, we really want to zone in on, A, a compatible use. Recreation is certainly one, but also a use that brings revenue and that allows opportunity for further investment back into the community. Remember that green space may be tempting, but when we're talking about parks or public rec, it is a cost. Every one of our parks is a cost to maintain, and we want to be sure that we can upkeep the existing fields, have them striped in time for sports, take care of them in time for events. You know, we want investment back into the community. But of course, it's all a little cart before the horse, because, you know, we need to actually see what's what in terms of a proposal. But Sheila, you could comment a little more as well.
Yeah, and as part of any development proposal, we would expect that there's gonna be an investment upfront for the land and an investment in terms of dollars spent on the project. And I think, you know, I think a sports complex and a soccer complex can only draw people into, draw more people into your downtown. And the more people that come downtown, the more they spend, the more they visit, the more they say, hey, this is a great place, I might want to live here. And so it all will fall into place. And I think, you know, we want to see that parcel return, you know, return some, we want to get an investment from that parcel for our taxpayers. So it is a nice piece of property, and I think it'll make a nice location for a sports complex.
Yeah, I don't want to beat the dead horse, but it's still in my craw, and I don't know how many of the people on the board here realize that we already got $5 million into that property by cleaning it up. And that's probably gonna stick in my craw forever.
No, that's right. That's true.
Turning it into a grass field bill doesn't give us any more return on our investment, though.
Yeah, but I have to applaud Shelton. They've got the slab, as they like to call it down there. That's quite an asset.
No, and I think the comparison, you know, I think that's a fair comparison, and I appreciate that you're comparing us to Shelton. But I would say this, that that park down there was a brownfield site. And the reuse of that parcel was very limited. So it wasn't, you know, it wasn't that they could do a lot of things with that place, so they turned it into a park. And it has worked out really well, and it's actually quite lovely. I agree with you on that.
Also, I want to point out, again, it's very premature, but, you know, a space like this that exists downtown, the idea is that it could accommodate city events. It could be a recreation area, entertainment area, that the city could use as well. So, you know, I think it's broader than that, and to really punch out what Sheila was saying, you know, and I don't have really any qualms saying this before the negotiation, we are expecting to get money upfront for the property that would essentially mitigate, if not eliminate, the purchase price entirely for the city. So when you talk about that upfront cost to purchase, we're really looking to neutralize that. Again, we really feel we could have both sides of this working for us. Both a recreation facility that can meet the needs for the city and private investment that could help us reinvest in the downtown in multiple ways, tax revenue, but also, you know, finally bringing people back to downtown Ansonia for shopping, for eating, and for further investment.
So, John, just a quick question, and I don't belabor this, but because I wasn't part of the original discussion, how is this going to help the city as far as the recreational, because it's private? Look, from what I read, it's a private developer, and he wasn't giving out anything free. He was gonna be looking to charge folks.
So I would say, you know, let's, I would say let's reserve that for our negotiation with a developer and to kind of get a better idea of what his plans are, what the space would be. Remember, you know, space isn't used all the time, you know, if there's space that could be meeting a need of the city, you know, think about it. We don't have many larger venues downtown. There could be a possibility there.
I also would point out that there might be a possibility of the developer partnering with some nonprofits as well to offer some services to the community. But, you know, I don't want to speak for him.
Any other questions for economic development tonight from the Aldermen?
I do.
Yep, go ahead, Joe.
Come back to that Olson Drive complex there. John, if they do build this sports complex, maybe they could work into the deal that Ansonia residents get a discount or something like that, you know? I don't know.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so all these thoughts are gonna be good when it comes to that next phase to start talking the details, you know, about what could be there. And you heard loud and clear from the beginning, we want this to be compatible with the community. Again, we want the benefit of both, right? Both private and at the same time, a public need being met. A good neighbor, right? We want it compatible with the redeveloped, revitalized downtown that we're all working towards building.
John, will this create jobs down there? Or Sheila, I don't know. You both are working on it, correct? So just a quick question, will it create jobs?
Yeah, I believe there will be people hired to work at the facility and to man the facility, and so I think there's opportunities for jobs.
I mean, the facility will need staff, also any of the users of the staff, the tenants will need staff. So you're really bringing, expanding a workforce and creating job opportunities downtown. And when you talk about any of these facilities, you also now trigger the idea of, you know, related industry, related facilities cropping up that may want to take advantage of the market, the new market that's opening up. You know, for example, at the most basic level, if kids are coming into used fields, they're gonna want to eat, they're gonna want to maybe have ice cream, right? On a larger level, there could be suppliers, you know, equipment suppliers that start to locate, you know, clusters happen. You know, we see that with restaurants, and that's true with any other type of industries. So we feel, you know, this is a great market to bring into the downtown area, but I would say, you know, let's save some of these details for our actual negotiations. Certainly, you know, we know that this board is interested in, you know, making sure it's a good fit and that it gives back to the city. And I think staff and the mayor, we all agree with that.
So, John, I have another, I'm sorry, I have just one more question. And I hope this isn't gonna, but has there been any conversation with you, Sheila, or the mayor regarding the YMCA having?
Yes, and in fact, so, yeah, not to spill, you know, not to spill too much of what could be a negotiation, but yes, we've definitely made it a point to put the YMCA in contact with the developer for the possibility of bringing some of those YMCA services into this project. So, yeah.
So, oh, so the services, so not so much the YMCA wants to build on the property.
I think that's the option of what the YMCA is looking to do, you know, we don't want to speak for the YMCA, but we certainly approached with the idea of, hey, anything YMCA wants to do, would it be, you know, would it work here as part of the overall project? Because again, the project, you're looking at an outdoor field and two indoor buildings, you know, would it be possible to locate maybe some of those recreation aspects? We're not entirely certain the YMCA wants to do that. They certainly want to continue offering services in the area, but we're not exactly sure that those services would include the same recreation that they did in the past. But we made big, strong efforts to put the parties in contact. They have been in contact, and I do believe that there has been some positive discussions. But remember, ultimately, all of this relies on the discussions we have with the developer. And at this point, of course, we need to start talking about, you know, what an agreement would look like, and that's something, that's gonna be the next phase of this initiative.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on. No, there's no more questions for Attorney Marini, correct? From the Aldermen, looking around, I don't see anyone. All right, move on to Lieutenant Lynch, updating us on the police.
Gotta get Copacabana in there somehow.
Not gonna happen.
That was a cheap one.
Good evening, President Schuer, members of the board. Chief Cota had a personal matter to attend to, so he's asked me to step in for him tonight. Quickly, we had our last food drop in Mobile Vaccine Clinic on May 25th. All the food clinics and the two vaccination clinics that were at Nolan Field went off without any issues. So we have the system set up, so if they decide to start up again, we're pretty sure we can roll right back into that again. We were able to make an arrest involving three of our cases involving the rash of stolen motor vehicles. It was a juvenile that we arrested. We have some evidence that's up at the state now being examined, hoping to tie in a few more arrests to those. I would just remind everyone, we're gonna continue to remind everyone, we are seeing an uptick in car break-ins again, and it's unlocked cars. People have to lock their cars. I know it's, you know, not a, you shouldn't have to, but you do. They're just going through cars, they're driving down the street, they're getting out four or five people at a time, and they're just going through open cars. So we remind everybody to keep your doors locked. Same thing with stolen cars, the majority of our stolen cars are cars that are left running either outside the house or at a gas station, so people need to be aware of that. We continue to work, there is a group put together of surrounding towns throughout the state regarding the rash of catalytic theft converters. We work with the other departments trying to identify some suspects, processing evidence that we were able to recover, and we're hoping to get some successful closure on that. We, Alderman Genetti, we did some radar on Elm Street over the last month since the last meeting. We were able to make about 17 stops. We'll continue to do periodic checks on Elm Street for you. We continue to do radar up on Ben Street. The radar trailer was up there. That's been pulled off and put onto Wakeley Avenue right now. We're gonna analyze the data from Ben Street to find out if there's any times in particular. That's the one thing the radar trailer gives us the advantage of. It gives us hour-by-hour printout of what the speeds are, so we can concentrate our efforts to where it's more important. We continue to monitor Wakeley Avenue, Main Street. Columbia Street has come up a few times. We continue to monitor that. It's a small street, but people seem to pick up and get going because it's a one-way. We've talked about the building before. They're doing the finishing touches, furniture is being built and put in, so that's moving along. And in regards to hiring, we currently are in the process. We have a certified officer, a female officer who speaks Spanish. She's going through the process. We're hoping to get her through before the Board of Police Commissioners for a potential hire. And we have the open for uncertified and certifies. We have formed a committee of some of our younger officers to try to get the Ansonia Police Department out there, job fairs and different things. We're gonna continue to work with the local community. The chief has had discussions with the Martin Luther King Committee, and we continue to work, try to work with the churches and the local groups to get residents' applications and get them into the process. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. I wanted to mention that for your benefit, as you analyze the data from those machines that around this time last year, there was one up on the Hilltop as well, and if you find any anomalies in the data, usually it's me sprinting late at night, and so if you see some really off-the-curve numbers, it may be me running. So you can just disregard that as you analyze.
Duly noted.
All right. Any questions for Lieutenant Lynch tonight from the Aldermen?
Yes, I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, sir.
Evening.
There have been a lot of people down at Nolan Field and on Wakeley Avenue in front of Nolan Field doing donuts. A lot of complaints, I'm getting up this in about that. All times at night. It could be early, it could be late.
Yes, we've had those complaints, too, and we're getting our officers up there. We're trying to address the issue, trying to identify people. There's a larger problem that comes with that that's too long to discuss right now, but we're continuing to monitor that also.
Okay.
I'll just add in Lieutenant, to add on to what Chicago just said, is that they're turning around an extra mark. I mean, I can tell you it's right across the street from my house. They're turning around there and they're zipping back down, back down towards the Nolan area, and it's a lot of them with the free-flow exhausts that sound like rapid-fire machine guns outside my windows, so.
We're gonna continue to address that for you, try to get some resolution, identify the people, and take corrective action if we can.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, next up, I see Dr. DeBaco and Assistant Superintendent Steve Bergen. Dr. DeBaco, would you like to address the board tonight?
Absolutely, and thank you, President Schuer. I want to inform everyone that graduation is this Saturday, the 9th, at Nolan Field. I really wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank Mayor Costetti and the Board of Aldermen for the support, especially this year. It has been unbelievably helpful, and all of the Aldermen and all the women who served on our reopening committee. As we know, it has been an unusual year, but with your help, we've made it a safe and successful year. Unbelievable what happens when the Board of Ed and Board of Aldermen, in combination with the strength of our community of Ansonia, work together, the things that can be accomplished, so I appreciate that level of support and communication. As, just some updates, our access road, I know Joe Genetti talked about this as a Board of Ed member, but now it's Board of Aldermen, the emergency access road to Colane will be completed by June 15th, which is long overdue for us to have that emergency access road. Also, as part of our American Rescue Plan, we'll be soliciting, every community has to solicit public feedback, so you will be seeing an opportunity to give input on what our funds could be used for, but I can tell you in advance, I will be posting, and I had talked to Sheila earlier about this, an equities and communication director, you know, for us, funded by the grant, something necessary as we move forward. And I'm more than willing to answer any questions, but once again, I appreciate all the support this year. I know our students and our families do. It was a long, tough year, but together we made it through it, and I appreciate it very much.
Looks like we made it, Joe.
Yeah, it looks like we made it. I couldn't get Copacabana, but it looks like we made it was my choice. So I was trying to suit for that, but thanks, thank you, President Schuer. You hammered it home. That was a good lead-up.
Yeah. Any questions?
Good evening, Joe.
Good evening, Alderman Rivers.
I just want to say that this year has been, I mean, the communication has been outstanding. I was, as a parent, I was informed on everything that was happening. And you did a really good, good job this year. Unfortunately, that's the last kid I got going through the school system. He will be graduating Saturday, but I just want to say that you did a really good job.
I appreciate that, and you don't know this yet, but I know something already that your last child might be receiving an opportunity somewhere, but I'm not telling everyone in public session. You'll find out when everyone else finds out, so great job on that one, Alderman Rivers. So.
Okay.
No, it's all good stuff. I appreciate the support this year. It's been great. I love being able, I call the mayor whenever I need. I can call any Aldermen or Alderwomen when I need, and it's greatly appreciated, and the support. And I probably will need you on another reopening committee based on what the state's requirements are, so that education subcommittee get themselves all geared up for round two this summer. But once again, much appreciated the support.
Thank you.
Joe, enjoy your summer. You deserve it.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Joe.
All right, I don't see CFO Miller, but I do see some people from Finance. I don't know if you guys, Kim and/or Rich, if there's any update from Finance beyond what we've received, or if not, we can move on. All right, are there any other public officials I missed? Is Mandy still here? Nobody got that one?
Did you really just do that?
Yeah. All right, with that, we're in public official session. Moving on to committee reports, Finance Committee.
Make a motion to pay all bills if deemed correct.
Motion by Mamon. Second by Tar. All in favor? Oppose, staying, right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Other committees that want to report, is there anything from, on ordinance, housing?
Ordinance, we did not end up having a meeting in May. I anticipate we'll probably be having a meeting, not only to discuss the landlord ordinance possibly. ordinance possibly, as well as addressing some of the previous things that we had discussed. So I'll talk to the subcommittee members, and we'll see about getting a date possibly. That was the, the fourth Thursday or June there, the twenty-fourth, that that's the anticipated date, but I'll let everybody know once I talk to council.
Okay.
Once in a row. I'll just add, regionalization, we have had two meeting cancellations in a row as we tried to get feedback from our consultant in terms of the numbers. We are anticipating to have that data, and it's likely that we will have a meeting on the twenty-second at seven thirty. You're all invited to attend. It would be the hope at that point in time that we would have updated numbers for an equalization discussion between the two towns. And then we'd have the savings comparison there updated. We, it appears that certain numbers were, and a great eye by Mr. Bishura, who spotted this, because a lot of the sub, a lot of the members were asking questions about the comparisons and making sure that all the things that were on the Ansonia expense side were also on the Derby expense side, and it turns out, because every community budgets differently. And Derby was, the healthcare is paid on the municipal side and not on the school side. So putting those numbers back together actually does, there is an added difference there. So we'll get those numbers back by the consultant. I've been told hopefully by the eighteenth, so I can share that with the sub, with the committee, and we'll be having that discussion on the twenty-second. So I'd invite everybody to attend.
Thank you, Joe.
Are there any other reports from subcommittees or anything from the Alderman?
President Schuer, do you know if Parks and Recs are still a committee? We haven't had a meeting in three months now?
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that.
I'll look into that. I haven't heard anything from them since, since their visit to us, which was about three months ago.
Um, because I also wanted to bring this to the board's attention that on a Sunday morning, there's a, um, a cricket game going on down there, and they take up the whole parking lot. A lot of people down there. I don't even know if they're from Ansonia at all. Every Sunday, early morning.
All right. Um, I'll check on that and get back to you. All right, so that's it for committee reports. Let's see, municipal reports, we have the boat recommendations and control approvals from the June seventh, twenty twenty-one boat meeting. No motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Rivers?
Second.
Second by Janetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Right, motion carries unanimously. Thanks. Land use report. We have the May land use report in our packet.
Make a motion to accept the report.
To accept by Stroman. Second by?
Yaman.
Yaman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. Tax collector report and request for refunds. The May tax collector report and the refunds and the amount of eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents, if found to be correct.
Make a note, I'm gonna send a note to Johanna, and just, so for some reason, page two or page three on that report, it gets cut off. I don't know if it's just a bad scan or something along those lines, but the grand list year twenty nineteen, it's, it's, I don't know, it looks like it's either double printed, or it's just, just a bad copy, but last month it was cut off. This month it's kind of chopped up and printed over, so that, that's gotta be, I don't know what they're using to print these on, but it's gotta be a little bit better.
Okay.
It's for the scanned copy.
I'll make the motion, Josh.
Okay, so motion to accept that, and again, the amount was eight twenty-nine fifty-four. Motion by Yaman.
Second.
Second.
By Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining. All right, motion carries unanimously. Accidents and claims, we have two, two claims, number zero six two one one zero zero seven, Linda Keely versus City of Ansonia, twenty Fairview Road, and zero six two one one zero zero eight Witsman, Joseph Junior, and Maureen versus City of Ansonia, sixty-eight Granite Terrace.
Making a motion to refer both to council.
Second.
Motion to refer to council by Yaman, second by Tar. All in favor? Opposed, abstained. All right, motion carries unanimously. We have, we have no communications this month, no resignations. We have one resolution. This is again another, one of those boilerplate resolutions. I see Sheila is on if we have any questions, but this is the certified resolution of applicant small cities program, resolution number one.
Yes, this is, just very quickly, this is our application. This is a standard form for, for the Department of State, Department of Housing for our project, which will be a one point five million dollar ask for modernization funds for the James J. O'Donnell Building. And that's, that's going to be our small cities request this year, and this is one of the forms that's required.
All right, any questions on this from the Alderman?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Yaman, second by Mamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstained? All right, motion carries unanimously. Grats, resolution one. We have no appointments, nothing under ordinance. Joe had mentioned organizing the next meeting. You don't have a date for that though, correct?
I'm thinking the twenty-fourth, but I want to double check with Attorney Maureen and make sure that we'll be prepared to go forward on that date. So I'll get to this, I'll get back to everybody on the subcommittee and make sure everybody's notified.
All right. Anything under new business?
Yeah, so I just have a quick question. Going back to the code of ordinances, I got two communications regarding seventeen eleven subsection H, which is the city noise ordinance. Residents are, I guess, going back and forth trying to clarify whether this was repealed or not, and just trying to clarify this. It does state from, I believe it was seven AM to nine PM. Can we get any clarification on that?
So I believe the police have been enforcing a noise ordinance. I know, I think Lieutenant Lynch is still on. Lieutenant, could you shed any light as to, you know, how that noise ordinance is being enforced, how it's been enforced in the past? And what to do if there is a complaint about noise?
In general, the, the, how we handle noise complaints is, we tell people, if you feel the noises too much, doesn't really matter what time of day or night it is, to give us a call. We have officers go out, we have them evaluate and make contact with the people that are creating the noise. We always try to give people at least one chance, and if we have to go back multiple times, then we'll take enforcement action.
Thank you. Do we know if that seven AM to nine PM is in effect currently?
In regards to what? I'm sorry.
I guess there was some concerns that neighbors or the cars going by, because it is written in, it talks about the loud exhaust, but it talks about between the hours of seven AM and nine PM. And there were several people in the community talking about it. Some said it was repealed, and some are saying that it's still in effect, so I said I would ask for clarification.
I'll have to take a look at it. I mean, my understanding is the seven AM is, is mostly for construction. We tell people we don't want construction companies starting before seven AM, and we don't want them going later than nine PM as far as doing work and digging unless, of course, it's an emergency situation where there's a water main break or a gas break or something like that. We'll take another look at it. I'll talk to you about the chief, and we'll get back to you on it.
Thank you.
I could also say the seven eleven that's there right now in the, if you go to the Unicode, that is the valid seven eleven. So there is an editor's note that talks about repealed sections. Those repealed sections are not visible, though. It's just talking about a history. So there was a different seven eleven before. What's there now in the Unicode should, by every, you know, I would imagine by every indication be the valid ordinance. There's, I see nothing that suggests that that seven, seventeen eleven, rather, keep on saying seven eleven. So section seventeen eleven that is there right now, that is the operative ordinance.
Thank you.
And Bobby, I will add that the subcommittee is having discussions about the loud cars.
Okay, because it does fall in there, not on subsection H, but one of the other subsections addresses the mufflers.
Yes, it does, but we're, we went a little bit, we're trying to figure out other, other things that can be done as well, rather than, because that section does specifically talk about a decibel meter and measuring the decibel meters and things like that for enforcement purposes, things like that. So we were exploring some other options and discussing it with council. We have, we don't actually have any language yet, but just so the residents know, because I've gotten a lot of complaints over here on the west side on Wakely Avenue. I'm sure you get them over there as well. So, you know, it's something that we're looking at and trying to see what we can do. Sure.
Is there any other new business?
I'd like to ask the lieutenant a question.
Sure.
Hi, Lieutenant.
Yes.
Have you received or taken any action for a noise complaint concerning? The former Big Y Shopping Center had a hawk sound that would chase away, I guess, seagulls or any unwanted birds that were landing, landing in that area. They were doing more than landing. I guess that's why the the hawk sound was prevalent at the time, and now there's some residents up on William Street that are above the former shopping center, and they claim that there's still noise coming from that sound. Have you taken any action at all?
I'd have to look it up. I can take a look and let you know. I know what you're talking about. I've heard that prior to that. I thought it was set more towards where the Sleepy's mattress shop is. I thought it was actually on that building, but I'm not positive about that.
Okay, if you could, look into it and let me know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, any other thing else under new business? All right, we'll move on. Yeah.
Yeah, are we allowed to say anything during new business or?
Joe, you can say whatever you want.
Like, you know, are we wait?
Yeah.
I mean, are we supposed to wait till, you know, if we got anything else to say later on at the end of the meeting? Because I, I just, I just think we should bring up about, like what the mayor said about Jeff Coppola and Bobo and, well, Mr. Kokowski and Jared Ian, and anyone who worked Griffin Hospital with that clinic with the vaccines, it was tremendous, and the amount of people who got these vaccines and protected themselves and other residents, my hat goes off to all these people, and even the mayor for getting this going. It was, it was a great thing, and I think people will benefit out of this, and it will actually probably save some lives. So I think we owe a lot of credit, credit to all these people who work so hard in this. And I personally would like to thank them, because my whole family got vaccinated there. And it was, it was a great thing. It was clean. It was ran good. It was safe. They really went out of their way to make sure everyone was safe when they went there to get their vaccines. So again, my hat goes off to them, and thank you so much.
Thank you for those comments, Joe. Thank you, Joe, and I would echo your comments. My whole family ran through there as well. It didn't matter if there was like five people or fifty or a hundred. They ran it really quickly and efficiently, and you moved through there regardless of how many people were there. So I thought they did an awesome job, and I told them that every time I went in with my kids, myself. So thanks for bringing that up, though, publicly.
Yeah.
Oh, no, and it was safe, because I, yeah, and it was very safe, and I know some people, you know, may not think it was, but it was very safe. I, I never felt so safe doing this. So, but thank you for everyone who was involved.
Hey, Josh, I'm not sure, can we make a motion to send a letter of thanks and appreciation to all those who volunteered for this, if we have that list?
Yeah, that's a great thing.
Yeah, if we can, if we can, I think we can hunt that list down and do that. That'd be awesome.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Mamon, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Can I?
Question?
Yeah, a question by Alderman Stroman. Go ahead.
Tony, do you mean people who worked it or volunteers? There's two different things.
Both.
All of them.
Oh, okay.
Including Griffin Hospital.
Yeah, sure. All of them.
Senator Sheila, do we have that info? Do you know? I think Sheila's still here, right? Did we lose Sheila?
I'm sure we could obtain that. We have a record of everything, and in fact, the clinics have been ongoing, so we could certainly do that.
Right, then my, then my motion stands.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? All right, yeah, great idea. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thanks, Joe.
Uh, under old business, we have two items listed. These are both capital transfer, Ansonia Public Works to purchase a three fifty, F three fifty super cab, and Ansonia Public Works to purchase F five fifty regular cab. Can someone from the city address this? Sheila, maybe?
Yeah, I can, but I don't know if Rich or Kim were, wanted to weigh in or say anything. This is, this is referendum money that was for Public Works, but we did not use all of it. They were for the, it was for the pump stations, to repair the pump stations. And the money that was left over in those accounts was transferred into citywide facilities and or equipment for Public Works, and that's where the money came out of.
Yeah, this is mostly a bookkeeping thing for the, for the auditor, just to have the proper budgets and the proper accounts when we go to buy them. So it's, the board has approved it, but it was a generic approval, and we're looking for the specifics to be in the specific accounts so that the, the auditor will see that we've done our due diligence in moving the funds.
Rich, do we need one or two motions on this then to?
One motion's fine, as long as it indicates both accounts that we're dealing with, where it comes from and where it's going to. And the amounts.
All right, we, that's not in our, in our packet, though, is it?
No.
You let us know what that, where it's coming from then?
Yeah. We will get that to Trish so that she can put it into the minutes, but.
Okay.
Ask for that. Thank you.
Okay.
So, go ahead, go ahead.
Rich, do we have the, the funds from the referendum, or Sheila, the funds from the referendum, do we have that to fully cover both purchases? Are we, do we have any capital inclusion that we need to put in for this?
They're fully covered with the, with the money that we have in those lines.
Perfect.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll get, we'll get the details on that. This is like, Rich says, more of a bookkeeping issue for them. So we have a motion for the capital transfer for Ansonia Public Works to purchase both an F three fifty super cab and an F five fifty regular cab, as discussed.
Motion to approve the, I'll give it to Chicago. I'll second it, though.
No, Tony, you can take it. I'll second you.
Okay. Motion pending the, the cap numbers, the ledger account numbers to be given to Trish from Finance for this.
All right, motion by Mamon, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries, and thank you for the clarification on that. That is the end of our regular agenda. Does anyone have any Manalove jokes before we go into executive session?
Please don't.
No, but I do have to say one thing, Tony. I already have his whole uniform picked out for him, so get him walking quick, the baby.
Oh, yeah, I got a couple of them ready. I think I at least have five or six lined up, and I must admit, I'm offended by Cassetti's jersey tonight. He's gotta burn that right after this meeting. All right, Joe.
All in favor of burning that jersey?
Aye.
All right, let's move.
Motion for executive session.
Let's not be ship's that pass in the night.
Recording in progress.
Got an echo on someone, too.
Is there some kind of echo problem?
Yes.
Need more? Need more cowbell?
Cowbell.
Echo. Motion to return to executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Rivers, second by Yaman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're back. We have. We're back. We have, actually, there's five items. I broke number one to Silver Hill and to 1A and 1B on the matter of 22 Silver Hill Road. Joe?
Yeah, um, we are going to make a motion to refer this for an 824 and ask that council proceed, begin work on an easement agreement.
All in favor?
Second.
Any opposed?
I forgot the second, Josh.
Oh, my bad. Second was Rivers?
Tar, no, it was Tar.
Tar, okay. So all in favor now?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
We, we pause for a second. Can we explain to the resident what exactly that means?
Okay, so Chris, so before the city can buy, sell, or even give an easement on any property, they have to get authorization from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we have to send it to them for feedback as to whether or not it's a good idea to give an easement or not. Once we get referral, referral back from them, they either give us a positive, a negative. Once we get that back from them, John will have drafted an easement agreement, and we can have further discussions about that.
Are you telling me that you're going to be sending this to Blackwell?
No.
He doesn't, he doesn't make it.
Planning and zoning commission to do a standard review, just to make sure they're in favor of the use of the property. In the meantime, I'm going to draft the actual legal paperwork that would make it binding. If there is a positive recommendation, then this board will consider next month the actual easement document, which would allow this, the project to go forward and specify, you know, what the use of the property would be.
So who, who is the?
City.
Planning and zoning that?
We will, we will shepherd it through planning and zoning, so I'll be at the planning and zoning meeting where this is discussed. But the president, chairman of planning and zoning is Jared Heon.
And the city, city, Jared Heon, and the city engineer will, will favorably recommend this easement to the board. So, I don't think there'll be an issue, and John will be there, as he said.
But this is, this is a legal process for any use of city property, whether we buy, sell, grant an easement. Seems a little cumbersome, but it's a statutory requirement that we have an 824 referral, and also a requirement that this board refers something to planning and zoning to an 820, to get that 824. When we say 824, that actually means Connecticut General Statutes, Section 8-24, where you'll see the requirement for cities to do this. Seems very bureaucratic, and it probably is. But it is a step we always take anytime we're, we're using city property in any way, selling city property, leasing it, granting it for any sort of use.
What is the next thing I have to do?
We'll give you, you'll see, you're going to be on the agenda for the next regular meeting of planning and zoning, which is, I think, the third week of the month, usually Mondays. You could feel free to attend that meeting if you'd like, but otherwise, this board will be taking it up likely again, same, same time next month, second Tuesday of the month, next month.
Okay, so P and Z for, I have to find that meeting for June?
We'll, we'll let you know when it is, the date of it.
I believe it's June 28th, Chris.
And then our meeting would be the, the second week of July.
Right.
Tuesday.
Second Tuesday in July.
July 14th, I believe.
Yeah.
Sir, I see a stack of vinyl records behind you. You don't have any Barry Manilow albums?
I collect records. I probably have about at least a half a dozen different Barry Manilow albums downstairs.
There you go.
This, this little bit that you see over here, this is just like my extras that I was selling on eBay. I've got, I got a lot of records.
Interesting, very interesting.
We can probably.
We'll be paying you a visit tomorrow.
I'll be paying you, yeah, because I got some too. I got a lot of, a lot of vinyl too, so.
Bobby said we can, we can stream on this, President, if you have Jump Shop Boogie on 8-track.
No.
No.
I don't, I don't have 8-tracks.
It's not, it's not 01, guys. I'm playing.
1B, the item 1B is 48 Silver Hill Road.
A motion to authorize council as, as discussed in executive session.
Motion by Yamman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Rivers. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions. All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, number two, 64 Pulaski Highway.
I'd make a motion to refer this for an 824 and a motion, and simultaneously a motion to authorize and ask city staff to conduct an appraisal on the property.
Second.
Motion by Yamman, second by Tar. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One, one opposed?
Yep.
Mamon opposed? Any abstentions? All right. All motion passes. Number three is claim 0320980, K Salem versus City of Ansonia.
A motion to proceed with a settlement offer as discussed in executive session.
Second.
A motion by Yamman, second by Rivers. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. And the last one, claim 0119933, Doc Smith Jr. versus City of Ansonia.
A motion to proceed with a settlement offer as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion by Yamman, second by Strowman. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstained. Right, motion carries unanimously. That is it. Adjourned by Rivers, second by Strowman. All in favor? All right, happy July 4th.